All right, we are live and rolling. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, in the grand city of Morro Bay. We are meeting via teleconference. We do have a quorum. We generally start with a moment of silence and just want to mention the passing of Grace Paletti, a lifelong member of our community. If anybody's ever driven down Pacific Street, they have seen the most decorated house probably in town. She always remembered every holiday with extravagant decorations, was quite the volunteer, and she was a Citizen of the Year. She was the team mom for the Morro Bay Police Department and the "are you okay" caller for the Fire Department as well, among many, many other things. So her thoughts go out to her many, many friends and her family. She was just truly a treasure for this, this community. So now I'll be quiet and we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Next up is Planning Commissioner announcements. Do we have any announcements?
This is Mike.
Hi, Mike.
I didn't put my hand up because I'm still driving, so I'm trying to be safe. I just wanted to comment about, we received an email from Councilmember Heller, who's our council liaison for the Planning Commission, regarding the public benefits that are being viewed as part of the Vistra project, and he thought that we should chime in for that. So I'd like to just put that on our plate as far as, you know, trying to do that at the request of Councilmember Heller.
I wonder.
Since we did, since we did have a subcommittee or committee that dealt with public benefits.
I wonder if we could address that as unfinished business, because there is that subcommittee that's put together, and that might be a good time, especially when you're actually in front of the camera.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that procedurally, you know, I thought I'd go through staff to make sure, since it wasn't officially on our agenda, how we could discuss that if it's appropriate to do it at this time.
I think probably we wouldn't have a discussion of the actual public benefit items, but to direct the subcommittee to get together a report to get to, I believe it's John Heading and Don Addis are on that committee with Vistra. So we will discuss that more when you're at your.
Thanks. Yeah. Notice that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. So next up is the public comment period. This is for items which are not on the agenda or anything you would like to address that you cannot stay later for. Nate, do we have anybody with their hand up?
Thank you, Chair. We do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. So we will move on. There are no presentations. Our consent calendar has the current and advanced planning and processing list and minutes from October 19th and November 2nd. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? And any comments or questions on any of those items?
Only that I wasn't around yet for those, so.
Okay.
I think that means I excuse myself from the vote.
You can, if you like. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, this is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mike and Joe, I saw your hand up. You want to be the second? Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye. Through the consent agenda moving on, we have no public hearings. Our new business item is a conceptual review of redevelopment of the libertine building. And again, this is the kind of review where we are seeing a project, making comments, asking questions. We are not making any decisions on this tonight, except for what perhaps we would consider to be important feedback to the client. And Cindy has this one.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Commission and Chairperson Stewart. Going to share my screen here with you. Okay, everyone sees that? Okay. So, yes, this agenda item is for 801 Embarkadero Road. This is the location of the libertine brewing company. As Chair Stewart mentioned, this is a conceptual review item. It is for a potential mixed juice redevelopment of the city lease site here. The applicant has included a project description, which is attached to the staff report, along with conceptual plans which have been submitted that show potentially a conversion of the existing second floor to a new nine-room hotel with room sizes ranging from approximately 260 to 825 square feet. The renovation of the existing floor would be altered to include a new coffee shop space, restaurant and bar area. There isn't an existing restaurant and bar there now, but also include space for banquet or meeting space, covered dining, outdoor patio area, along with new lateral access where none currently exists by installing a 15-foot wide harbor walk. And also include 270 square feet of west-facing outdoor patio seating area in the area outside of the Harbor Walk area. An existing basement would be used for brewing and storage, and the project would include an approximate new building addition of 1,000 square feet. In addition, the libertine is proposing to assist with public plaza improvements in the adjacent street and as part of their significant public benefit offering, as well as the extra wide harbor walk. And I'll get into that in a little bit with the presentation. On the slide here, you see the location of the libertine building. It is just south of the building that you probably have all seen, was just demolished today, sorry, last week, the Harbor Walk Plaza Building. And to the south is Rose's Landing. Let's see, can you see my cursor when I wave it like this?
Yes.
Okay, good. So the applicant or potential applicant is California Coastal Investments, and that is Eric Newton, and the architect is form design build. And I apologize, I have the wrong year on this slide, so it is 2022. Centennial Parkway is immediately to the west, east. Get my bearings here. So no application has been filed. This is just a conceptual review item. And the applicant is hoping to get Planning Commission feedback and input as it relates to two key areas, the architectural design that is proposed, and we're also, staff's also bringing it forward for the, due to its core Embarkadero location. And should they move forward with an application, what the next steps would be is they would take the feedback that they receive from the Planning Commission and use that to develop an application for conditional use permit. As you see on the slide here, it has the zoning standards. It's in a waterfront PD zone. The land uses waterfront, commercial, industrial, that PD overlay is the, what allows the leasing to apply for exceptions to their proposal. And we do include some of those potential exceptions that are in this conceptual review item. The Planning Commission is allowed to make findings of significant public benefit, and that enables applicants to potentially ask for exceptions, which is how we process these waterfront lease site locations. The property is also located in the waterfront master plan area, as well as the downtown waterfront strategic plan. It is in an area of the original jurisdiction of the coastal commission, so should they need to, should they come forward with an application, they would also need to submit to the coastal commission for a coastal development permit. And here are some existing street photos. On the top, you see what the site looked like before last week, because to the right of the photo, you see the former off-the-hook building, now renamed Harbor Walk Plaza. In the lower photo, you can see it's been demolished, but this shows the libertine building from the south elevation and its, its current L-shaped configuration. And the building's probably was constructed approximately 1950s to 1960s. And the next couple of slides I'll go through show the design of the building. So as described in the applicant's project description, they have presented a design that would distinctly remodel the architecture to what they feel is a modern maritime-style building with a mix of materials and a prominent sawtooth roofline. The style isn't, they've been inspired by the 2016 City Council-approved Centennial Parkway Plaza plans. That was a effort that the city led, which included multiple public meetings and sought public input on revitalizing the Centennial Parkway Plaza area. It envisioned making improvements to the street end area, and that's what they're proposing as part of their significant public benefit. In this design, the hotel rooms would be located on the second floor and on the south and west elevations. They would have balconies to break up the massing. The south elevation visual sims, as you can see here in the photo, show an exterior staircase and outdoor dining bordered by a landscaped planter area. And then I'll show you another slide soon, which shows what that proposed extra-wide harbor walk would look like. And that would be a key connection for the city. The minimum requirement is 10 feet, and they are proposing 15 feet. But also, more importantly, it fills in one of the last few gaps in the city's broader Harbor Walk area that it runs the length of the Embarkadero. Here's a photo sim from across the street. In the waterfront master plan, the view corridor requirements for two-story corner lease sites, they are required to have either 30% of the lease width be their view corridor or provide 45-degree angles from both sides of the building. An example of what you would see what this looks like is at Marina Square, the buildings, that was a a project that was approved in the 90s with a combination of lease sites, and there are multiple angles there, and that's how they met their view corridor requirement. In, I think that was the last project that the city approved where it allowed the diagonal view corridors. What the Planning Commission, in, you know, recent memory has been used to seeing, is more of the interior lease sites with the 30% requirement. For this project, in order to comply with the view corridor requirement on both sides of the building, they would need to alter the building on the water side of the building, and they are not proposing to make any changes to that west side of the building. So what the waterfront master plan requires is that you'd have that 45-degree angle at both. In this case, it would be both at the southeast and the southwest elevations. They, they would also need to remove any decks that extend into view corridor. And as you can see from this image, they are proposing one diagonal view corridor. These next few slides that I'll go through depict the floor plan layout for this building, the existing building. You're seeing, this is what would be the proposed floor plan. The required front setbacks, and this is described in the staff report, for the first floor are required to be an average of five feet, where I think the plan showed that they're at two feet. The second floor setback is required to be 10 feet. And currently, the project does not comply with the setback requirements. They are also required to have the street side setback be at five feet, so they would be non-conforming for both front and exterior. In addition, the lot coverage requirement. So in the waterfront master plan, the maximum lot coverage is 70% of the land portion of the site, with second floor maximum at 70% of what is allowable on the first floor. And as you can see here on the second floor, it would be non-conforming for second floor lot coverage, because they are proposing to add square footage, square footage to both the second and the first floor. And then they have an existing basement area that they would propose to maintain, to be used as brewing area and cold storage. So here are some additional simulations that show more the design articulation, including the proposed balconies, a vertical plank siding and color scheme. You can see the roofline variation, the cable railing. You can see the view corridor angled requirement, which I described. You can see it on the right side of the photo. It is not angled on the left side of the photo. It also includes, design-wise, multiple windows, doors and entry points for pedestrian orientation, which is a feature that's described in our design guidelines. And here is a photo sim of the diagonal view corridor. This is looking southwest. Yes, that is right. And here is a photo simulation of what the Harbor Walk would look like. This doesn't show the, the outdoor seating area that's shown on the, on the site plan, but it does show that extra-wide Harbor Walk and how it would wrap around the building to meet up with the street end. The building to the left would be the Harbor Walk Plaza. And so that's the Harbor Walk connection point. In the waterfront master plan, so it does include design guidelines. It applies to all waterfront projects, of course. Three key areas in the design review process include sidewalks, the Harbor Walk and architectural compatibility. And the design guidelines in the downtown waterfront strategic plan focus really on character-defining elements, architectural quality that adds richness and variety. It talks about adding varied rooftops to avoid monotonous views from the bluff-top areas. And I did take some photos this afternoon from the bluff-top, so I'll show you those in just a bit. And then also details the DWSP preferred architectural elements on new or remodeled structures to enhance overall visual access to the water. In this case, with this building, as I said, the non-conforming building dates to approximately 1950s or 60s. So of course, it does predate both our waterfront master plan and our DWSP. It is currently non-conforming for front setbacks and second floor lot coverage and view corridor. However, property is in a planned development overlay, which does allow exceptions to these development standards if the Planning Commission makes a finding of significant public benefit. So some discussion points for the Commission to discuss this evening would be, is the, you know, in addition to your feedback on the design, is, is the public benefit proposed sufficient for the number of exceptions that would be needed for this project? They have not provided details on the extent of improvements for what they would do with the Centennial Parkway Plaza. They are in the meeting tonight, so they'll speak at public conference as well, and they can provide some more details. But the plans do say that that design would be to be determined, and that they are offering to fill in that space. It's currently the parking area. So they are proposing that. This is the, the last bullet here on the screen. They have both the Harbor Walk access and then the installation of these improvements, and then as well, potentially sidewalk, curb and street enhancements, and then a proposed pedestrian and drop-off area. So some additional discussion points for the Commission to, to consider is, do you feel that the project's consistent with the waterfront master plan and the DWSP? I said earlier, you know, the, the emphasis on architectural compatibility with the, the buildings on the waterfront. There's, you know, you know, compatibility versus consistency. You know, designing projects so that they're consistent with the fishing village character, you know. Does this project seem like it's appropriate for the waterfront area with its proposed design? And then as well as the sidewalk connection, the, it does not currently meet the minimum 10-foot sidewalk width. And I have, I have some pictures from that as well. And then the next bullet about compatible building design. And then, you know, given the extensive remodeling and then the addition of outdoor dining and plaza improvements, which, you know, hopefully will, you know, reinvigorate the lease site, reinvigorate the Centennial Plaza area and attract more people, does the Commission feel that the existing sidewalk width is acceptable to remain as non-conforming? They've stated in their plans that they don't propose to change the setbacks in that area. So yes, the, we are requesting the Planning Commission's input on these items and our design guideline policies. Staff's review of the project is, this project, you know, does offer a chance to make use of an existing building and redevelop an underutilized commercial space to provide some more viability and, you know, attractiveness to that area. It also adds overnight accommodations in a central core Embarkadero area. On the other hand, there are some requested exceptions, and so that's part of your discussion tonight. I have bullets here on the screen. Their requested exceptions would be non-conforming front setback, five foot where eight foot is required. And then the view corridor, it does lack the 45-degree view corridor from the southwest side of the building. And then the second floor lot coverage requirements. And here are some, I added this from the City Council approvals. This shows what that Centennial Parkway vision was back in 2016. Coincidentally, you do see the existing libertine in the top photo, and then the visioning that RRM did in the bottom image. And then the next slide, this is also the designs for the Centennial Parkway Plaza. The top photo, you see looking east, going up the Centennial Plaza stairs. And then the bottom photo, bottom right is looking west. And then, just for your consideration, or if this is helpful, but I did take these pictures this afternoon. These are some bluff-top photos that shows it from the top of Centennial stairs. I tried to step back, so I was, you know, at what would be considered top of bluff, and the tree on the left was in my way. So I was trying to, trying to, you know, angle myself to get the correct photo. Here is coming down the steps on the right side, the photo on the right, at the landing area and then at the street. So, you know, really looking right, and then the, you know, visioning how this Centennial Plaza area could be improved. And then just, I, I thought this was interesting here. So I took these street sidewalk photos today. And this is, you know, walking south, but you see in the photo, you know, the libertine building. But one thing I thought was interesting, and I think what we've all experienced is in some areas, there is some narrowness of the sidewalk. And what was interesting is the photo on the left, I'm walking behind what appears to be a group of friends, and they're bunched together on the sidewalk. They're walking in front of the libertine. And then the photo on the right, it was curious, because that was just moments later. They left the sidewalk, and they're walking across the plaza area, and as you can see, they've all spread out, and they're all looking to the right, and they're looking at the water, because that's what, you know, that's what we like to do when we see these view corridor areas, corridor areas, is look at the water. So I thought that was like an interesting contrast, you know, they're, they're bunched together on the sidewalk, and then they spread out, and they're all looking to the right. The photo in the middle is just, you know, trying not to, you know, take it, take away anyone's privacy, you know. But just so you can see the sidewalk width. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. I thought that was an interesting contrast and the, and then just as, you know, side note, this is the project to the west. It's the Harbor Walk Plaza. The, just for some of the commissioners who weren't on the commission when that project was approved, it just, you know, more food for thought for your discussion tonight, but these are the visual sims of what that development will look like when it is built. And then, this is the view corridor. These are the images at the precise plan stage of the CUP. And then this was a photo from the concept plan. And it's, I put it in here just so you could kind of see what the Harbor Walk looks like. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I've talked enough, and I'll turn it back over, and let me know if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Cindy. I really appreciate those extra photos of the Harbor Walk Plaza off-the-hook site, because I was gonna ask about that, what, you know, because I didn't remember what is that gonna look like. So appreciate that. So at this point, we will have questions of staff before we open for public comment. And Joe?
Two, two questions, Cindy, and a really good presentation, by the way. With respect to the street end and development of the little plaza, I'm assuming that the, that the applicant is proposing paying for half of it, or is he willing just to do the entire remodel, including that of his neighbor further to the south?
So I can probably let them speak at public, when, at their public comment on the extent of it. What they have told us verbally and no commitments, of course, because, you know, it's not an application yet, but they have said that they would be, you know, willing to do as much as the city wanted on that, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn. Both the Rose's Landing project to the south and the Harbor Walk Plaza to the north, they did have conditions of approval that required them to contribute an amount toward funding the installation of, you know, this Centennial Plaza design.
And then, can the other quick, could you, could you refresh my memory? The, the development to the north, the one that's been demolished, has been rebuilt. Is that, what's the height of that, the, of the new building?
25 feet. Yeah. And so, and that was, you know, a similar thing, they, you know, because for any two-story development to be approved on the west side of the Embarkadero requires a Planning Commission finding of significant public benefit. So that, so the height alone, going from 17 feet to 25 feet, requires a finding. They, but they provided their significant public benefit was extra-wide Harbor Walk access, some benefits in the view corridor, and they have, you know, some other, you know, tweaks and public restroom amenities and things that were a part of their approval.
Oh, one, one other question. And was, was that the, you know, forgive me, because I simply can't remember. Was that the only exception that they sought?
The Harbor Walk Plaza?
It's probably unfair for me to ask, because you, you know, there's no reason why you would.
I.
I seem to recall it was, but.
I feel like it was, you know, so you saw the simulation. That one does meet the front setbacks, so that does have the average of five feet on the first floor and 10 feet on the second floor. I couldn't say for sure if it, if it met the, the 70% of lot coverage on the second floor, but that requirement, maybe that one wasn't. But if, if you want, I can look that up during the discussion and get back to you later if that, if you want.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Cindy. Mr. Roshan.
Cindy, thank you for the presentation. And Cindy, thanks too for the Harbor Walk that you and Scott did for us. It was really fantastic. So what I want to make clear is that I understand the exceptions that the applicant is proposing. So could we just go through the list of exceptions together? One, they don't want to do the walk. The walk is supposed to be eight feet wide, and they're proposing five. Is that right? Front walk.
That is correct. They're not proposing to change the front setbacks, because they're trying to make, you know, adaptive reuse of the existing building and maintain some of those non-conformities.
And the building next door is going to have an eight-foot walk, right?
Yes, yes.
So the walk will be wider at the new project and then narrow.
And then it will pinch down.
Okay. Kristi, could you turn that down maybe? The second one is lot coverage. What is the actual footprint lot coverage that they're proposing? 70% is allowed? Do you know what the number is?
Um, yes, hold on a second. There were a few discrepancies in the plans. In, in one area, it said that they were adding 1,500 square feet. And by staff's calculations, it came to 1,001. So we, that's the number that I put in there. They're proposing lot coverage of 64.6%, but they didn't differentiate water versus land coverage. With these lease sites, there's both a water lease site and a land lease site. And for the, for the land side of the lease, it's saying that they have an existing. for the, for the land side of the lease, it's saying that they have an existing lot covered, it says existing lot coverage sixty-three point two and the proposing sixty-four point six. So it would get larger, but it's just that they don't differentiate like if that separates out the water lease area. Lot coverage in the, in the master plan is only land area, but yeah.
Could that impact the coverage number then?
It impacts it in that if you have a building that juts out over the water, you're only allowed your land area to determine your seventy percent number. So it actually
That's a big number here because it does project quite a bit out over the water.
Yeah, right, right. And we, we haven't been able to verify the numbers. Yeah.
We need that number. I think that's an important number. And then that number has more implications because then we're only allowed seventy percent of the first floor area for the second floor. Right? Even if, right, if we would allow that.
Yeah.
And right now their second floor is a hundred percent coverage. Do I understand that right?
Um, yes, yes, it would appear that way.
All right. So they're asking for an exception for the walk for the second floor lot coverage. And then the third exception would be the view corridor, the forty-five degree thing.
Yeah.
And we don't know how, how much square footage that would come out to. They haven't calculated that.
Uh, they have not. I mean, they're showing, they're showing that they would meet the view corridor on the southwest side of the building. But the way that the master plan reads, it's required on two corners.
And that also means that the second floor lot coverage is a hundred percent, including the lower exception, which is the view corridor exception.
Right.
Then that actually makes the second floor square footage even higher.
Yeah.
Setbacks. Can you tell me what exceptions they're asking on setbacks?
So what it says in their plans is that they are not proposing any changes for setbacks and
But what's required then?
So what's required is the required to have an average of five feet on the front first floor, ten feet on the front second floor, zero feet on the interior side, so the side to the north, and then five feet on the street side. And then technically it's zero feet on the rear, but we have the harbor walk requirement. So that's ten and, and they, they would meet the rear setback. They would meet the interior side, but they would be non-conforming for both front and exterior side.
Got it. Okay. And then the benefits that they're, how have they actually described the community, the public benefits to ask for all these exceptions?
So what they
Just want to say, and I know you have, but if we could say it one more time. So it's really clear what they're providing.
So they are offering an extra five feet in width to the harbor walk. So the minimum is ten feet and they're offering fifteen. And then they're also proposing to fund installation improvements in the Centennial Plaza Plaza area, as well as potential sidewalk enhancements and pedestrian drop off and that.
And that's a little unknown what that proposal would be. There's no actual plan yet.
Right. And there's no visual simulation. It's to be determined because they haven't yet gotten to the point where they've developed an application to say, this is exactly what we're going to do. We've done our engineering and our design and
And there's no talk of a dollar amount yet for the plaza, right?
Not yet.
Okay. And along with this, we would be looking at a fifty-year lease. Is that correct as per the conceptual plan?
Um, so it's not really part of the planning review criteria on use permits? That's something that they would negotiate with the harbor department? Yeah.
I see, but isn't that still part of the investment? Doesn't this investment have a, have a relevance? I mean, that's part of the heart block plan that says that.
They, they, the way that they amortize that investment as far as number of years is something that the city does, but it's outside the scope of the planning department. And I think maybe Scott wants to add it, add something to that.
I think only that that's the maximum amount of lease time that we can provide. It's on Thailand's trust. So that's the maximum. It could be less. It's usually, it's based on amount of investments, that type of thing. But again, not really something.
Fantastic. My last question while Scott's there. If, if Scott and Cindy, when we did the walk, you talked, talked quite a bit about the Centennial Plaza Plan, which, you know, really describes the excitement of coming down Centennial Stair, walking across the Embarcadero, seeing the harbor beyond, and the idea that this becomes a public space. One of the things that we've been focusing on, this commission has been focusing on is event spaces. And so I, I think we would be exceptionally excited, this commission, about the idea of the Centennial Plaza becoming this event space right on the water. This would be the first one like that, that when we were walking, there's some other parking lots that could also become event spaces. Could you tell us a little more about, in other words, what would this plaza be like? What, what are we even conceiving it? Why do we want an event space there? Can you give us a little insight what we're, what we're, what, what they're going to provide?
I think the whole concept behind this has always been to, you know, have a one gathering spot for the public, you know, kind of like public park type amenity. But also to provide the opportunity to program events into these spaces. The city doesn't have very many of these things. And if you look at the street ads that we have there, you could really have, you know, there's four or five of them, depending how you want to look at them. And it would provide opportunities if you created these sort of venue type spaces here to have like their individual vignettes that could be leased out to folks that are wanting to have events. You could have it for, maybe it's a wedding or maybe it's the, it's the libertine who's next door. They want to have a band out in the plaza and, you know, like for this property, for this property as an example. And they could make use of that, or it's Rosa's Landing on the other side. Maybe they want to lease it out for some event they're having. So I think that's how we initially, you know, envisioned this, is creating public space for people to gather. And there's many different ways to, you know, to utilize it. And so I think that's kind of what we've been thinking about for the space.
And then I guess the other exciting thing is, as part of that plaza, it's going to connect through the stair, which I do understand that the city is in negotiations now about how that stair might be developed and, and, you know, carried out. And I mean, this becomes the central, the main connection from downtown to the Embarcadero. Is that right?
Yeah, this is the, really the kind of the focus, the focal point for the sort of redevelopment opportunities that we have here. You know, we have the, the, the property that sits, you know, where the city's parking lot is, it's across the street from this. And then it goes up the slope there. We're looking to redevelop that. And along with that would come the, the Centennial Parkway improvements that would go up the stair. So and again, that, and the whole intent behind that was to provide a focal point there. And then to help connect, you know, both the downtown to the waterfront or the waterfront to the downtown, however you want to say it. Among other, you know, opportunities out there to do that as well, but that was kind of the idea there.
Yeah, very exciting. And, and I mean, we, we are in, the city is in negotiations. Is that fair to say?
We, we are, we are working with, with some folks to see if we can bring that forward. Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's my questions.
Thanks, Bill. Asia, have you got some questions for staff?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there is a record of the like design career that happened or whatever the public engagement was when you said in twenty sixteen, there was public comments taken on design features and preferences. And I was just wondering if you had those or if there was record of those, if we could get ahold of them.
Uh, yeah, there was. It's, I went to city council, so we have the staff reports online. We did have public outreach meetings at the vets hall where we did some visioning exercises and just imagining what that area would look like. Scott, I think, was present at all those meetings, so he could probably give a little bit more detail. But yeah, that is all online and on the website. I can forward those links too.
Yeah, that would be great. Just because I'm, if were to comment on, you know, how this might impact the look and feel, you know, how this preliminary drama, drawing that they've sent along. If they want comments on it, I'd be really interested to hear the original public comments for that area.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and all of the public comments that we received really informed the, the final adoption of that Centennial Parkway Plaza Plan, and that's the image that I put in the staff report.
Okay. And then Asia.
So can we go back to the question about the height of the neighbor building being twenty-five feet? And then that was non-conforming, right? Or that was an exception that was made for the neighbor building?
Right, for the
Yeah. And so then this building is, what's the height of this building being proposed?
Uh, so this building would also be at twenty-five feet.
Okay, but that's not something, that's not one of the exceptions we would be looking at?
It would be, well, it's not really an exception because they are allowed to do twenty-five feet, but it would require a finding of significant public benefit. So that would technically be part of your eventual approval process is does the public benefit, is there enough to justify, one, the height twenty-five feet? And then two, you know, these other development standard exceptions. And in, in response to Commissioner and Gracia's question earlier, I did, I did look up the staff report for the Harbor Walk when that went, that was in twenty eighteen. And they weren't requesting exceptions other than height. So that was correct. It was just height. And they had proposed, you know, public benefits included public restrooms, public seating, ecological exhibits for education. It was designed as a LEED certified building. I don't know if that was technically one of their public benefits. And then enhanced children's play area, but there were no other exceptions.
Um, and then what, do you know the current height of the?
Of the libertine? Um, I don't precisely know. I, I'd have to go and look at the plans.
And then I was wondering if you could just explain to me one more time the view corridor. This is a little bit of a new concept for me.
Yeah, yeah. So
Is it currently conforming is, or is it currently non-conforming?
So it's currently non-conforming because the, the west side of the building that creates the L shape that would technically block the view corridor requirement. So view corridors are supposed to be open and linear spaces to the bay that don't have any obstructions greater than, I think it's thirty inches in height. So basically like a table and chairs. And for lease sites that are greater than fifty feet in width, and most of the lease sites on the waterfront are just over fifty feet. This libertine building is fifty-two feet. They are required to have, if, you know, like the Harbor Rock Plaza, that was, you know, I think it was a, might have been a fifty or fifty-five foot. Actually, no, it was seventy-five feet. I just remembered that. So then you're required to have thirty percent of that lease width as your open view corridor, open to the bay. The way that has been done over time, it varies. So at the Boatyard Building, two doors down, that's designed with two buildings and then it has an open view area to the bay. If you're a cornerly site like Marina Square, that had, that was a project where they took multiple lease sites and they combined them together in one like master conditional use permit. And although they do have some open view corridors in the center of Marina Square, on the ends of Marina Square, there's angled approaches at both the street and the bayside. And so for the libertine, it predates the waterfront master plan, so it doesn't meet any of these view corridor requirements. If you're a single-story building, you don't need this thirty percent. Single-story buildings are only required to have fifteen percent of lease width. It can get, it can get kind of challenging honestly for lease site holders because the Embarcadero lease sites do not tend to be very wide. And this, that's, that's exactly why Marina Square combined lease sites back in the nineties because it, it enabled them to have, you know, more development flexibility. So for the libertine, they would need one of two things. They either need thirty percent of their lease width or because they're a corner lease, lease site, they have option B, which is provide forty-five degree angled view corridors. Because the idea is that you could be from the street and you could still see to the bay or, or from the block top.
Okay.
And Asia, I looked at the staff report, the existing height says it's twenty-four feet, ten inches, so just about twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Thank, thank you. Yes. And, and I do recall that they were proposing that it'd be twenty-five, so I guess another two inches.
Branch counts.
Yeah.
When the, when the mention of the Centennial Steps Plan was mentioned, I recall that if I wasn't on the planning commission at that point, I was certainly, you know, an interested citizen or more of it. But I might've even been on the planning commission. So just to comment that the, the, you know, less we look at, go back and look at it and perhaps put more weight on what that plan is than we really should. The, the, there was considerably less than unanimous approval of, of the, the look at that Centennial Steps Plan. And as, as I recall, you know, the criticisms largely centered around, it was, you know, too much concrete, too massive, too modern and looking like something that might be more appropriate in Orange County than more obeyed. So again, if any of us go back to, to look at that, to sort of figure out what might then be appropriate for what the, the applicant is suggesting, just to keep that in context.
Thanks, Joe. Mike, questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm going to kind of piggy, piggytail a little bit about what Bill's already covered. So I'm not going to do all that stuff about, you know, exceptions, but, you know, we, you've said it in the report, but let's do this again. It'll be kind of dovetail into what Bill already covered, but a little bit of mix and match here. Okay, so, you know, we have standards and then we have exceptions. Let's just, you know, put that out there, right? We usually have standards and then we have exceptions. There's a lot of exceptions that we're dealing with here. And I always look at what are my guiding documents or principles that I'm supposed to use whenever I make a decision as a planning commission? I have a waterfront master plan, I believe, right? And is that right, Cindy? My waterfront master plan. Now, are we meeting the standards or the, for the waterfront master plan? Just yes or no. See, I'm going to now go through my guiding documents. Are we meeting the standards for that?
Oh.
Grantings, are we granting exceptions? For, if we were using the waterfront master plan, are we meeting the requirements? Are we granting exceptions?
Well, it's a double-edged sword.
See, that's what I'm talking about, because that's what confuses me, because you're, you go down that list and then I'm all over the map. I've got the waterfront master plan. I got the W, W, D W S P, right? Which is our, our strategic plan. I've got design guidelines, right, which is citywide design guidelines. So you see where I'm getting at? I'm trying to figure out where are all my exceptions coming from. And, you know, because I've got to use my guiding documents or principles in making my decisions. And how am I going to, I, I heard what you said at the end is we have to find an overriding, you know, consideration in order to grant this anyway. But I'd like to be able to first start with what are my guiding principles? Where do they come from? And what am I granting the exception for?
Right, right.
Something like that. That sounds confusing, but
Yeah. Well, and it, I mean, development on the waterfront is a little different than a development elsewhere in town that's commercial development. Your guiding documents are the waterfront master plan and there's the downtown waterfront strategic plan. Both of those documents have design guidelines in them. But the waterfront master plan, just for some context, you know, it didn't, it, because all of the properties on the waterfront are in a planned development overlay, it's written into the code that you do have the ability to ask for exceptions if there's, if there is a finding that of significant public benefit. And the reason is, is that these are publicly owned properties. And if someone is developing the property and they're giving back to the community by offering some type of public benefit that helps the public, that is significant, then, you know, this, that's what the waterfront master plan allows one to do is to ask for these exceptions. Now, could you do this, say like if McDonald's or a furniture store, or I'm just thinking of random commercial places in town? No, you couldn't. And, and because they're not in planned development overlay. So that, that is something that you think about the PD overlay and it makes, it makes development on the waterfront kind of different in that regard. Yeah. So I just, just kind of give you that context. Yeah, so I just, just kind of give you that context.
I would add something to this, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, sure.
Plan development overlay is a tool, okay? It's, it's a tool to allow projects to be fit to the site and the location. It's, it's also, it's also that. It's all the things that Cindy said, but it's that as well. And, and the idea here is sometimes you get unique ideas that people want to do along the waterfront, unique concepts. And, and then they can, to make that concept fit, they might not fit within the parameters of exactly the required setbacks and those types of things. And it allows flexibility in the application of design standards, zoning codes, standards, those types of things to allow different types of projects to come forward. So, you know, that's, that's kind of what it's for. You know, it's, when it comes back to discretionary, you know, permitting processes, you can require them to adhere to all the, all the standards. But that's what the PD overlay is for. It's, it's really, it's really part of the tools that we have in the toolbox to fit projects to sites. I'll leave you with that.
Okay, and the, I was gonna ask Cindy too. So you already talked about the building to the left being twenty five feet? And the building to the right will be, is twenty five feet, right? So this building will also be twenty five feet. So I'm looking at it more from what will be the final outcome be when we, if we were, I was, I asked somebody, it would be nice if we could get a picture of what the final result would be once we have a twenty five foot building, a twenty five foot building, and a twenty five foot building. That gets back to view corridor, right? That gets back to what Asia was talking about. What is a view corridor? Is it gonna impact that? Because that's very important on the waterfront. So that's all I bring up. And I didn't want to drill down too much because I thought Bill already did a good job on that. But I was trying to hover around everything he talked about, using my design guidelines or, you know, the things I should be using, my tools, like Scott told me, you know, in order to make a good decision on this project. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that. But I just wanted to see if we could get a visual of the twenty five foot building, the twenty five foot building, twenty five foot building, and what that would do to our view corridor in general, as a whole, as a whole.
Yeah, and, and I, I think I have a picture in my presentation that shows both before the Harbor Walk was, Plaza was demolished and the libertine together. Because before it was demolished, it was twenty five feet then. So those are two twenty five feet tall buildings that are next to each other. Harbor Walk Plaza met its view corridor requirement when it applied. The libertine wouldn't. They just have one of the diagonal quarters, but it's also located adjacent to a street. And so there's, you know, you know, I don't know if that's a compelling factor or not. And then there would, there would be a small alleyway between the two buildings where previously the buildings were right up against each other. So there would be accessibility. And in the conceptual plans, they show the hotel entrance for the second floor hotel rooms on that, along that alleyway, that north side of the building.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we go on to public comment, were there any expertise communications? Anybody wants to talk about, Joe?
I, I met with Sean Green, who like ultimately, or subsequently, it seems he may be a competitive bidder for, for the leasehold. So I mentioned that.
Okay, thanks, Joe. I met with him too. I'm not sure he's in the market to bid, although you never know. He is on our harbor advisory board now, so it makes, makes a good connection. Anybody else?
Yes, Susan, I met with Sean as well yesterday there at the site on the hill. So to get a more of a, you know, different perspective, because I spent plenty of time on the, the ground level. So I wanted to get a little higher. That's why I brought up the, the notion about what a twenty five, a twenty five and a twenty five foot building right near each other, right back to back to back look like, what would that look like? So we talked a little bit about that. But, uh, yeah, like I said, this is the first expert communication I've ever done as a planning commission. I usually don't do those because I like to do my own research. I thought I'd bring that up and I do my own walking. I do my own, you know, usually work that way. But I, I just wanted to just state that Sean provides so much good information to this planning commission in general, that I would give him that opportunity. I just wanted to hear what he had to say because he does provide us a lot of good information. So that's why I met with him. But usually I don't do that. I just wanted to state that for the record.
And, and just for the record, Mike, and for the rest of the commissioners, we do have a kind of a history of communicating with applicants, with their agents, with the community. If you're comfortable with it, I think that's fine. I think what's important is that we don't communicate then with each other about the conversations we had with those people until we get to the meeting. And to, in those meetings, to, as you say, collect information.
That's right.
Rather than sharing opinions or, you know, saying, well, this is how I'm gonna vote on it. So I think it's in a small town, people really do appreciate being able to talk with us about things, whether they're applicants or other, other residents. And Bill, is your hand up?
It is, I spoke with Sean as well.
That guy got around. Who knew? All right, so at this point, let's open up public comment. And generally, we give the first position to the applicant. Are they available for comment?
I think they have their hand raised.
They have their hand raised. So Nate, could you open the mic for the applicant?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
You are now allowed to talk.
Hey, good evening, members of the commission and city staff. Can you hear me by, by chance?
We can hear you, and who is this?
This is Eric Newton.
All right, Eric, thank you.
The California Coastal Investments and then the owner of libertine Brewing. First, I wanna, I, I appreciate the ability to speak during your public session and want to thank the city staff, especially Cindy, Scott, and Ed, all who provided constructive feedback and valuable guidance while developing our design. And our opinion meets the intentions of the waterproof master plan requirements and the city's objective, objective to develop this property. We're extremely happy with the outcome and the current submission as we believe that collectively, we have maximized the potential of the lease site in many different ways. With the joint efforts with the city, this location has the ability and the potential to be the destination focal point of the Embarcadero waterfront. Our design puts emphasis on the approved Centennial Parkway rendering that R M provided back in two thousand sixteen. We also have made some, some significant improvements featuring a modern maritime look, iconic sawtooth roof line as seen in many of the buildings in the Monterey, Cannery Row areas. We also increased patio areas to showcase the outdoor experience of the Harbor Walk area. We've also coordinated with adjacent north lease site tenants to improve access of their area and then also included access to vacation rentals and the trash enclosure area that gets those amenities away from the south side of, of the building. And in doing that too, we also helped them remove some code requirements to better build their and more aesthetic construction on their site too. And not only that, we're promoting a seamless partnering design with the city to tie our building and our amenities into the layout of the future plaza area there too. Our program requirements maximize the use of the building, which include the coffee shop with kitchen service, restaurant, including outdoor service on both harbor and Embarcadero sides. We're proposing to continue our live music on both sides. We have an event conference room that could be utilized by the community and also nine vacation rentals. All this adds value to the Harbor Work experience and will increase tax revenues to the city exponentially from the current existing use. Our proposal does have significant public benefit. First, the Harbor Walk, as Cindy indicated, we will increase the fifteen feet and provide connection from the future plaza area and the north adjacent property. Secondly, secondly, our development will clean up certain inappropriate structures in this area. For example, the trash enclosure, there's a bunch of landscape pole, abandoned poles and the parking lot amenity too. Third, thirdly, the proposal will start the development of the plaza area, which much needed pedestrian and traffic improvements and changes. Currently pedestrians is not only a walk across the parking lot entrance, they also walk through the parking lot area to reach the observation deck in the harbor. Eliminating this parking to create friendier pedestrian flow will also provide safer thoroughfare and provide a canvas for future development. We're also improving, proposing to do the street improvements, including a street bulb out by the patio area and a drop off area in front of the plaza. And right now, the, the improvements are to be determined. You know, where we were planning on negotiating with the city, all that. And it's, we're open for discussions on that. Since this renovation is an existing building, there are certain obviously nonconforming characteristics that we propose to remain. The, the first one is the front sidewalk currently exists that there's approximately a twenty foot section, sidewalk walkway that remains five foot width in lieu of the required eight feet. Our intent is to have this remain to retain the current building configuration and the square footage. We propose to mitigate this area by increasing the width of the sidewalk area at the outdoor patio in conjunction with proposing a bulb out into the street for pedestrian crossing across the Embarcadero. Another nonconforming item is the view corridor. We do want to stress that the proposed design does not, design does not make the view corridor worse than the current configuration. In fact, it makes it slightly better by moving the stairs back towards the water side on the south side. In addition, the site is quite unique in the fact that there's an opening space to the median south, which allows some leniency to the view requirements. Our design also, as Cindy indicated, has a staggering, staggering angle designed from the Embarcadero to the water that increases the view from the, to the southwest area of the project. Lastly, the second floor lot coverage is conform, is not conforming as the second floor matches the first floor square footage. This was in efforts to complement the renderings of our design concept. Why we made this adjustment here? We find this appropriate when there is a substantial open, open space to the south. And just to maintain the aesthetic and functional benefits, benefits of this outweighs the master plan requirements and assistance maximizing the use of the buildings in our opinion right here. To sum it up, we feel that some of the requirements of the master plan need to be adjusted due to the configuration of the site and the adjacent local, location of the open space to the south. This lease slate is unlike most of the lots that the master plan was developed for as we do have a open space to the south of us. Certain rate arrangements could be made to maximize the development of this building in the area and tie it into the, the future plaza area. We want to end by saying that we enjoyed working with the city so far. We're really looking forward to receiving feedback from the commission to finalize our projects. And we really appreciate the time to, to comment and, and, and make our present, presentation to you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newton, appreciate that. Nate, do we have any other public comment?
Thank you, Chair, we do not have any more raised hands.
All right, back to the commission then.
Apologies, the hands came in late. We have two raised hands.
Let's get to those folks. Who do we have first?
First up would be, he Weinholz. And Betty, you are now allowed to talk.
Great, thank you. Thank you, this is Betty Weinholz. I did send in some comments. I would have a side question regarding that. Are you not publishing public comments on the website? The city council is now doing that, and I didn't know if the planning commission was going to be doing that. Then getting to my comments, you've covered several points that I've made, the commissioners have in terms of exceptions that are being made. I would stress my sixth point, which was the architecture is not maritime related in terms of what Morro Bay looks like as a maritime place. And I think that that is a major concern for me and I think for others that we want to maintain who Morro Bay is. We don't want to become a different kind of maritime place. Appreciate you talking about the view corridor, talking about the setbacks that aren't conforming, about the height, that there is, I'm not seeing any public benefit other than the extra five feet on the Harbor Walk. And that's been taken away because the sidewalk in the front hasn't been widened. And one of my points was that when you're redoing a building that's nonconforming, it seems to me it should go back to being conforming. In addition, I have a, a few other comments. Because the Harbor Walk is being extended five more feet beyond the ten, and even that whole fifteen, there's no talk about the eel grass. I'm assuming, does that mean there's no eel grass down there? Or that's yet to come in the real submittal? I would like to say on places like the Anderson Inn and the Smith Hill Place on the south end of the Embarcadero, parking for these vacation rentals are under the building. I didn't see where parking was provided for these vacation rentals. And so I'm, I'm wondering how that works. I understand that they have some grandfather type things, but that really means people are parking on the street long term if you're there for the whole weekend. So I'm concerned about parking. I think the, the idea about the planned development overlay is, is certainly, as Mr. Graham said it, my understanding is also that planned development overlays require extra looks so you can be more protective, if you want to be, than the given standards. And so it kind of goes both ways in terms of creativity as well as more protection. Let's see, was there something else? Yeah, that view to the south, based on how the building is configured, but the view really here should be to the north where the rock is, not just across to the spit. I think those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else do we have, Nate?
We have one more, and it will be Sean Green.
Welcome, Sean.
You are now allowed to talk.
Thank you, Planning Commission and staff. I do want to say to the public out there that late last night, I submitted a concept, about a sixteen page concept that because the agenda correspondence isn't something that's published, I will go ahead and submit that again to council so that that gets into the eyes of the public. But for the, the many people I've already sent it to and, and who have given me such positive feedback, it really, it overwhelms me how, how, how thankful I am to all the great feedback that I got on my concept. Again, for those of you at home, the, the basic premise of, of my pro, of my project is a multi-use, single story structure, stays below seventeen feet. As the coastal commission prefers, they even blocked a previous project at this site that went above seventeen feet in the two thousand teens. A little bit more about the site history because I think this does matter. The city and, and some of the planning commissioners are a little bit newer. The city had a, a leaseholder here for fifty years. He made some concerted efforts in the two thousands to get a project done here. There was one, a really promising one that merged two lots together and proposed a conference room. Again, council, coastal commission shut it down because of its two story height. That leaseholder ended up giving up the lease at the end of the fifty years. And at that point, the city relinquished all exclusionary rights. I'm sorry, the city regained all rights to that, to control that lot. And in short term renewals of that lease, no exclusions or anti-competition clauses were left in that language, which leaves such an opportunity site for the city to do the right thing. For whatever reason, we haven't issued an RFP. I've pushed for an RFP several different times over the last four or five years. It seems like such a missed opportunity to see a competition of ideas out there. Whether it's my project or someone else who has the best idea, that seems to be the one that should win out and improve the city the most for the most parties. That means residents, that means businesses, that means nonprofits, it means visitors, it means everyone involved with the city of Morro Bay, okay? Upon seeing today's agenda item last week when it was published, I basically decided I'm gonna dedicate the next six days straight to putting together the concept plan and renderings that many of you have seen and taken. to putting together the concept plan and renderings that many of you have seen and taken a look at. And if you haven't already done so, again, please do so, and I'd encourage the public to do so as well when it appears on council agenda correspondence next week. That's all I have to say. I appreciate the time and energy of this council. I'm sorry, of this commission and of staff, and I look forward to working with you, hopefully in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Green. Appreciate all your efforts.
Susan, can, can I ask?
Wait, one minute. Let me see if we have any other public comments.
Okay, back to that.
And Nate, was that it? Do we have anybody else in the queue?
Thank you, Chair. There is no more raised hands.
All right, thank you. All right, Mike.
Yeah, I don't know if Sean's still there. I just wanted to ask him a question real quick since, just a quick question regarding what he said right now. Is he still there, Sean?
Looks like he is still there.
Sean?
Yeah.
Sean, I just want some clarification. You said you would keep this, you know, whatever you're rendering is below 17 feet. What is your understanding of what the current elevation is? Because I'm confused about the current elevation.
Oh, the, the current height of that, the current height of the building is 24 feet 10 inches, pushing right up against the 25 feet. If you're standing on the bluff, the reason for the 17 feet is that from the bluff, anything above 17 feet blocks 100% of the bay views at that position. And so when you're looking at 25-foot buildings and you see three in a row of 25-foot hotel, restaurant, or retail combinations, each of those three would block 100% of bay views from the bluff.
Okay. Thank you. We will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who wants to start? Joe?
And I'm going to go slow here because this is one of those few occasions where I'm actually using notes. Yep. Yeah, I think it's really relevant for, just for the sake of precedent to, to note that the property to the north was able to comply with what, what I will call the, the obligations of a sidewalk setback. And, and a square footage footprint and, and an upper story. And, and they did that. And then we're granted the maximum height and the, and the additional significant underscore significant community benefit being the public space to the north of that property. Again, the first part of this is going to focus on, on, on the, the community benefits. What are the, are the exceptions? You know, with respect to the, to the widening of the harbor walk, you know, there's some wisdom in saying that the harbor walk should be 10 feet, not 15. And there's some value in there being a consistency in, in that. I sometimes feel that when a harbor walk is wider, it creates a kind of a an unattractive sense of vacancy. And there are also inevitable the temptations of the lessies along the boardwalk and sort of the creep of tables and chairs, et cetera, et cetera. And then again, as Betty mentioned, you, it doesn't do any, it doesn't help the revitalization of the eel grass. So, you know, I, I'm quite comfortable sort of thanking the applicant for considering, you know, widening the harbor walk. But in view of that being one of the additional benefits he's being presented, I'd rather forsake that and, and hope that some of the more significant exceptions could be eliminated. And I'll go into that in, in a few more minutes. You know, our opinions here also really sort of center on what would actually be the look of that public park area. And it's, there's nothing in the file at this point or presented by the applicant that is of much help with that. And you know, that, that will be, that will be a problem. With respect to the overall design, you know, I've long supported, you know, the repurposing of industrial spaces and sometimes in industrial spaces, people will decide to try and build housing of one sort or another, and they try to accommodate the industrial look. But that's not really the case here. There's, there's really nothing on the Embarcadero that, that corresponds significantly to this kind of what I'll call a kind of a retro industrial look. And I, I don't think it's particularly maritime. I don't think it fits with the notion of the historical small fishing village seaside destination for Moro Bay. And you know, with, again, with respect to the, to the reference to the Centennial Stairs Plan, there were considerable objections to, particularly to the Centennial Step Plan in that it was not really in keeping with the historical image of, of Moro Bay. So I would not rely too much on any of those kinds of renderings to favorably influence, you know, the acceptance of this particular architectural design. You know, so here's, what am I, what am I? Here's what I was, what I was thinking is that I, I think that, without doubt, that widening the sidewalk in front of the, of the property is absolutely essential. And I, I don't think that any kind of, whatever you call it, a bulb out or whatever, or an inconsistency is, is appropriate. It's, it's bothered me. That, that particular part of the sidewalk has bothered me ever since I first came to Moro Bay. And likewise, you know, the, the recommendations are for two diagonals precisely at these kinds of locations where the property is at a, at a street end. And I really, again, if I were presented by a group of concerned citizens, you know, months or years from now, and saying, Joe, why, why did you decide not to require two diagonals at that property? I would be hard pressed to give a really convincing answer. I, I think those two diagonals are essential. Also, I note that, and I think I'm correct on this, on the design that I saw with the one diagonal still represents an expansion of the footprint of the building. And, and I just think on principle, I'm opposed to expanding the footprints of the buildings on the west side that, that face the water. The, the whole notion of expanding, expanding existing buildings along the coast is something that I think we just can't condone and, you know, I hope sort of went out of vogue in the 60s. And I, I would make an exception to that though. In that, as I say, I, I would want, I would want both diagonals and, and the building would have to be shrank to accommodate the wider sidewalk. So I would be willing to expand the footprint of the building to accommodate the lost square footage as a result of what he gave up in terms of the sidewalk. But that's it. And I would pretty much insist that the second floor has to have the necessary setbacks to break up the massing of the building and to avoid what I saw were, you know, balconies overlooking the, the boardwalk. I, I really don't find acceptable anything overhead as you walk along the boardwalk. Now we come to the height of the building. Well, again, the neighbor's building is 25 feet. The current height of the building is 25 feet. And realistically, if we're going to accept the proposal of a restaurant and a spacious hotel rooms above it, you really can't do that with 17 feet. You do need the 25 feet. And as I went up on the bluff, that's, that's the view that becomes really essential. And, you know, 25 feet doesn't really interfere that much with the views from the bluff. And as I said, there are plenty of other structures that height. So I would, so I would grant the 25 feet, but then I would look for what's going to be the significant additional public benefit. And, and that's where I would expect a really significant remodel of that street end. And when I say remodel, you know, I'm hoping that we would have a plan that was really creative and imaginative, you know, it's easy to say that. But what I mean is, yes, this, it should be an area of public seating. It should also be, you know, just an attractive site. Quite, quite irrespective of the seating, just as an open space, it should be impressive. And then it needs to have the utility and the flexibility as a small event space. Let's see, I think that's that's, that's about it. Now, you know, and I, I also, you know, I, I anticipate that we will probably hear more about, you know, the financial constraints that what I've just suggested would be imposed on the property or on the business. And, and you know, and, and that's a consideration too, but my response would be, you know, we, we as a commission, perhaps we could, or, or perhaps the, the person who ultimately, the office that ultimately approves the lease, maybe the harbor office, could hear evidence. Okay, so if, if we're to, to hear that, we, we, that much can't be done and still make it a viable business. I don't know if that's true, but if it's a possibility, then some office should be able to see evidence of that. And by that, I mean, you know, rev, rev projected revenues, actual revenues, cost of construction, mortgage paybacks, the number of years it could be recaptured in. So that someone, whether it's this office or another department, can make a, a reasonable assessment. I mean, it's one thing, it's one thing to say, well, you know, if we do all those things, Joe, and we shrink the size of the building, it's going to take 25 years to recapture the investment. But it's quite another thing if that recapture occurs in four years instead of three years, something like that. So I'm, I'm just pulling these figures out of the air, but you understand what I'm, what I'm talking about. And, and you know, and there's, there's also, you know, talking, talking to Sean, he, he mentioned a, a figure as to what the current monthly rent on the property is. And I'm not going to cite a specific figure. It's probably none of my business at this point. But, but I would like, I would, you know, a, a note to the city council. In their negotiations, I would, I would like them to make sure that they have a, a mechanism in place which accurately over this very long lease of 50 years keeps the rates, the rents at reasonable market rates. And that's not simply a matter of, you know, there was an escalation of a certain, certain percentage every few years. There has to be an alternative or a little more sophisticated formula for doing that. And I, I hope they, they take that into consideration and make sure that that is in any, in, in this, in this, any, any long-term lease that they agree to. That's about it. Unless I hear anything else that triggers another comment on my part.
Great, Joe. Very good comments. Thank you. Bill, your hand is up. And you are muted, Bill.
Thank you, Susan. Joe, that was good. Let me start off real quickly by saying, I think this is a really important discussion. And so I'm really happy that we're taking time with it. And I want to thank, you know, Betty and Sean for weighing in. I mean, their comments really do help shape what we have to say. And I also want to say, even before I start, a, a thank you to staff. The very fact that staff has brought us this conceptual review is the right thing to do. This gives us a chance to really let everybody hear what we think and, and be thoughtful about it. Then I, before I start, I want to thank Eric and Eric Newton, because I've had many a nice evening listening to live music at libertine, and I've had even more nice beers, you know, in that place than I've had nice evenings. And it's fantastic to know that Eric's going to continue is really, really wonderful. Second thing that has me so excited is one of the things this commission is really concerned about is event space. We think it's going to be one of the biggest pluses for the harbor walk to have programmable events. If this parking lot gets converted, you could easily with temporary efforts, tents and things, put a 200-person event there. It could easily be a wedding or, you know, an office, you know, thing, something we can't do right now. So, you know, the very fact that staff is thinking about this, that Eric's willing to help do it, I think that's really a big thing. It's, it's really a good thing. That being said, I want to continue about the importance of the site. As we look at this, it's not so much the Centennial Stair Plan and Plaza. It's, the way it's done, I think it has to be better, and I think, Joe, your comments were right on. It seems a bit Orange County, but I think its concept is strong. I think it's really good. And when Eric did his opening remarks, he said, you know, how this is a focal point for the harbor walk and the Embarcadero. And, and it's not just a focal point, it might be the focal point as you come from downtown, down the hill. And so this site is important from the bluff because it's the first view you'll have at this major connection to the, to the harbor. And then it's very important when you cross the Embarcadero and go onto the harbor walk. That being said, I think this discussion heightens because everything we're looking at has to, I think, align and support those efforts the city's already trying to do. So not only is this site an important location, but it's important in terms of the implementation of the Centennial Stair, the Centennial Plaza, and ultimately the Harbor Walk. So to try to be a little more concise, I'm pretty much on board with what Joe said about the exceptions. I don't see how we can approve them. The walk is an impossibility. I, I think you have the building next door complying. You can't not do it here. I think the lot coverage is a real question. And the fact that they don't have exact numbers because the building does overhang the water substantially, that doesn't give them an allowance to, to make their lot coverage work better. So we need real numbers on that. But for me, maybe the most scary thing is the setbacks on the second floor and the fact that the lot, the coverage is 100%, not 70%. And it's 100% of an area that's not complying, not complying with the view corridor to the, to the bay, which means it's even more square footage. I have to say, this plan looks like it's packing in the square footage. That's not a good thing for the site. And I certainly agree with Joe, the five-foot wide boardwalk doesn't justify that as, as a, as a public benefit. The, where I'm a little, where I want to focus a little bit of my, my, my concerns is how these exceptions impact the view of the harbor. When you stand up at Dorn's and you look, you can see the harbor over the, the boatyard buildings. But you can't see the harbor water at all where it's a 25-foot height. You, you can't see it at all. And if all those buildings happen, then all of a sudden, we don't have a view of the harbor anymore from this important connection. I've got to say, we have to think about that. That's, it's, that's not an easy thing to, I think, make an exception to. My hope is that when, when the plan looks and complies with a 70% coverage on the second floor and looks hard at opening up the view back to the bay on the 45-degree angle on the bay side, that there is a way to open up that second floor more substantially. I think that's an important move. It would open it up even more now than the, the existing building does. But I think it's so important that we look at that and it's going to, I don't want to approve something that would go against what we're trying to do in the plaza and the stair. And I think this would not support what we're trying to do there. The other thing that's worth mentioning is, yes, this is an existing building, but I have some concerns about that. The second floor is almost what is, it's entirely new, the second floor, and it's a change of use. I'm not even a hundred percent sure, and I'd have to see structural, you know, a really strong structural explanation that you can build on top of these existing things without a lot of redo. This becomes such a major renovation that I'm not comfortable saying that you can grandfather these things in because of the existing building. Also, this is a land lease. This is not a privately owned building. It's not like a typical grandfather that we would see in so many cases. So I think we have to give it the extra scrutiny. So I'm joining Joe and saying that I'm going to have a hard time getting past those exceptions. But I also have a hard time with filling in the second floor height. I think we need that as wide as possible. And I'm going to encourage Eric and his architect. I think you can look harder at the, at the, I studied the hotel plan. I think that can be done more carefully. So you maybe get a narrower hotel. Maybe you, you keep a lot of rooms, but it, it needs to be pulled back as much as possible. I would give a rule of thumb that you almost have to expose 25 feet of that lot, almost half of it on the second floor to make this really a successful effort. Architecturally, one of the things I was concerned about the style is in an effort to sort of break down the style. They made it look almost residential, almost condo-like with the individual slices. And what that does to me is it takes away the, let's call it just the, the warehouse fishing village industrial sense of the site. That's a problem that is not hard to solve, but I thought it was, it would be worth mentioning it. Because I do think right now the, the, the architectural style doesn't really fit, partly because it looks more residential than it does commercial. I have other things to say, but I'll stop there and see where it goes.
Thanks, Bill. Asia, you've got any comments?
Yeah. There's a lot to think about. I just want to ask one question of clarity. If you're looking, I'm on Google Maps right now. And if you're looking at the building from Embarcadero and you're facing northwest, is the view corridor, is one of the concerns that the view corridor needs to be at a 45 degree angle on that perspective at the back? Or sorry, on the west side of the building?
Yeah, it's a 45, if you were standing in the street end and looking at a 45 degree angle towards the street and then towards the ocean, right to the water. So if you're standing in that street and looking at the building, looking at 45s that go straight out like this and clipping the edge of the building up in both directions, does that make sense?
So sorry, if you're, I was looking at the Google image. If you're standing straight at the building.
In the street end, yeah, if you're standing in the middle of the building in the street and looking at it, and you go 45 degree out from where you're standing, you're going to clip off the edge of, of the building there, or have that view corridor would be 45 degrees from that, that, that position essentially.
Okay, so it's not if you are standing on the street, maybe farther south, looking at the backside of the building? That is not considered. Okay. Okay, that clarifies a lot for me.
And it's because it's a street end. The street end view corridors are different than if you were in a lot that's sort of in the middle of a block. So, okay.
Okay, that makes sense. So then, I mean, my primary comment would be that I would love to see that public space prioritized to do what it takes to get that plaza established. That said, the two, two main points that strike me as really important is first, the bulk of the top floor. Like Bill was discussing, the bulk of the top floor is being slightly excessive, I guess, is my non-technical term for it. And the, the almost wall-like, the, how it makes it almost wall-like on that side, south side of the building. So that's my first concern. And then I just wanted to bring up the San Luis Obispo County, one of the tourism agency, Slow County, did a, did a survey of residents across the county, including in Morro Bay, I believe. And one of the takeaways from this survey was that Slow County residents see tourism as an essential economy and an essential industry, obviously, and in Morro Bay, that's obviously very important down for the Embarcadero. And, but some of the main feedback Slow Cal received was that Slow Cal, Slow County residents want to see tourism increased and enhanced. And I'm a firm believer that a brewery and a coffee shop and restaurant space will be essential for tourism to continue and to grow and flourish in Morro Bay. The libertine, I think, is very key to that happening. But the other half of the response that Slow Cal heard was that although we as residents want to see tourism flourish, we do not want to see our, I forget how they worded it, but basically we want to see the ethos of our character remain and not be overtaken by, by maybe some, you know, what would be considered like luxury tourism. And so when this presentation described the building as or compared it to like the city of Monterey, I think it did somewhere in there, that put up a slight red flag for me in the design of the building because even though Monterey holds on to some of that fishing culture, it's very much a Bay Area destination, expensive waterfront town. And I think that part of what's reflected in the Slow Cal research is that residents want to prioritize that we stay, we stay the organic, affordable place that we've been. And I know that this proposal is doing that with, you know, trying to provide some affordable accommodations. But I want to propose that, that is reflected further in the look and feel of the building. So hopefully that makes sense. I'm verbally processing here, but those are my concerns, bulk and feel.
Thanks, Asia. Mike, you have some comments?
Yeah, you know, I don't want to say what's already been said, but I think what's important for me and all the residents of Morro Bay, of course, is the fact that when we move forward with whatever we move forward with, it will be there for a very long time, up to 50 years. If this process, you know, works its way through and something's finalized, it, it will be there for 50 years. I'll be gone, but our next generation will live with it. So that's why I said, you know, we, we really need to think about what are our standards? What do we want as a city? Not only for ourselves now, but for the future. What, what do we want Morro Bay to look like? And I just think that Bill and Joe did a really good job, especially Joe ran through a lot of what I wanted to say about concerns, not necessarily knocking anything out at this point, but I, I truly do believe by adding five feet at the back, you're not, you know, it's not a benefit when you're not putting it where it needs to be in the front. So that's to me, five minus five is zero. So you're not really getting anything, right? There's really no benefit when you're just taking it from somewhere else where it should be. And I believe it should be in the front. The true benefit would be putting that space in the front because more people use the front than the back. So there it is. So I'm just saying that I don't really think you can call that a public benefit like that to the point where we would accept it as truly so and, and grant it. It's, it's going to be really hard for us to do that. So that's just being honest. And in fact, the other properties have that. So we, you know, it'd be very hard to get to the point where we don't have them do the, what the other properties are doing in that area. But that, that's all I really wanted to say, but I, I did, I think the, the applicant stated that the second, and anybody can correct me, maybe staff or Cindy. They stated that the second floor lot coverage matches the first floor lot coverage. Is that true? I wrote that here. Second floor lot coverage matches first floor lot coverage because of the open space on the south side. That, that's what I heard.
Now, I think that's correct. I think that's correct, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah. And, and there you go. That's exactly what Bill and Joe were saying in a different way. I took notes. I said, whenever you have the same lot coverage on the top that you have on the bottom, I don't think that's going to work very well. Because you're not really doing anything. You know what I mean? You're not being, you know, you're not, I had you use this, how do you, how do you say it right as a planning commissioner? You're not digging deep enough. Bill kind of said that. You're not working hard enough to make it what it could be by simply putting the same thing on top than you have on bottom. And that's reflected in the, in the photos, I think, you know, in kind of what Asia said. So I think we're all being consistent. We're just saying things in a different way. But when I heard that, that set off a red light. You know, we never grant, second floor should never match first floor lot coverage unless it's in a totally commercial space where you're going, you're trying to get every foot of a space you can, and nobody cares. Here, this is the Harbor Walk. So that's not going to, it's not going to work there when the second floor matches the first floor and there's not any breakup. So that, I think both Joe and Bill said that Asia agrees that we need to do something with bulk. So that's it. I'll just say that I agree with everybody. I think we're all saying the same thing, but in a different way. But I think we just need to work harder to make this work.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. Really appreciate all these thoughtful comments. I, I will say, I also appreciate when any business person is making an investment in our community. We, we, we respect you, we rely on you, we appreciate you. And it's, it's a tough call to figure out how to make it all work financially. I absolutely agree that the sidewalk widening is a must. I think we have to have that. Looking at the RRM design drawings from that original plan, I think, and it may just be an illusion, but in a way it looks like there are differing heights in those roof lines. And one of the thoughts was to make, when you have a single structure, to make it look like more than one structure. So that I remember Expo 67, that'll date me how old I am. The World's Fair had a habitat which was sort of created with cubes. Now that wouldn't look good in Morro Bay, but it was the idea that you had a structure that had articulation. So, so you had different view corridors and a different sense of, of having one's own space. So I wonder if varying heights could help. I absolutely agree that the second floor has to fit those percentages that are part of the requirement. If there's a second floor at all, you know, one of the exciting and interesting things in the idea that was presented in public comment was just to eliminate that second floor, create an open space that had the views, that had the activities. We have an awful lot now, I think, of remodels having been done on the waterfront that include second floor lodging. And that actually in itself was an exception to start with. It's now become more of a norm. I feel like when you put lodging on a second floor, you're making it a private place. And we have had a goal for this waterfront, for the Harbor Walk, for it to be a public place. So you put lodging upstairs, it says you can't go here unless you've got the golden ticket. So, and yet I understand that that can be how businesses can make money, how the city can generate the TOT. So, you know, whether we can get creative and find some other solutions to that, perhaps fewer spaces and more openness up there. I, I would hope we can generate some more ideas on that sort of thing. I agree with Asia, you know, the concerns about keeping the character, so that it's not a luxury tourism destination. At the same time, we want to be a comfortable and clean and inviting destination. Love the idea that we can do something with this, this end of street huge view corridor. I do think, even though we have always made these exceptions, that, that parking nine units with, you know, no parking places, folks who are coming from out of town and will have a vehicle and need to leave it somewhere for however, 24 hours a day for, for their stay, that is a concern to me with creating this kind of space. So it sounds like we're, we're all kind of on the same page. We'd like to see some other explorations of this site. You know, I'd had an initial question myself of why it didn't go out for an RFP. And that is not necessarily a requirement. Mr. Graham also reminded me that especially given the two years of the pandemic, and even before, it was hard to get responses to RFPs on the waterfront. It's considered a challenging place to do development. And again, I think that's why we really appreciate anybody who's willing to bring forth a plan and hopefully have some good creative financing for it. But, you know, might, might be interesting to see what would happen to do that, to put it out to RFP and see if we had some creative ideas come forward. And I think I have lots of thoughts and comments, but I think I'm going to stop there because again, I think we're sort of repeating ourselves. Bill, you got your hand up again. And I see Joe. So let's go Bill and then Joe.
Thank you, Susan. I think as a way to wrap this up, I liked your summary. I think it would be really interesting if there could be an exploration for an alternative use of the second floor. I took to heart what you said, and I think it makes great sense about the hotel being private. I also think that libertine could make the most exciting and destination, second floor rooftop, you know, space, probably on the Embarcadero. It would be so exciting to come off the bluff and look down that stair and, and to see activity and live music on the second floor. And, you know, maybe even along the edge where the new building is going on, the north edge, you could definitely do, I don't know, it could even be like brides' rooms and, you know, maybe a special hotel room for events. And I guess I would suggest, and who knows what the commission will finally come to. I, if something like that could happen, I would really look hard at how to find exceptions to make the project work. In other words, if we could transform that second floor and recover that view that we don't have now with the existing building, that would be a giant community benefit.
Interesting points, interesting points, Bill. Yes, I would agree with that, although I sure would really like to see that sidewalk be wider. I mean, having gone through it with strollers and two kids and all of that kind of thing, it's.
I, I don't think we give up on the sidewalk.
Okay, okay.
Currently ADA compliant, the sidewalk?
I, it probably is barely, but with that light pole there, it's really a squeeze.
I want to, I want to get through my life in Morro Bay without once bumping into that light post. Real quick, just a couple of things that I, that occurred to me. And the comments are all remarkable. One, without question, that pub is my favorite spot in Morro Bay. I just love that. With, with respect to Susan, your comment about automobiles, all I'll say is we, we really have to be careful it being 2022, that we, we don't let the automobile dictate, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It should, should not be the tail wagging the dog. You know, Bill's comment about trying to create another view corridor on the second floor. Um, you know, Bill's comment about trying to create another view quarter on the second floor is just wonderful. I wish I'd thought of it myself. We, we should do whatever we can in terms of. Looking at the architectural plans and seeing what we can do to create another view, uh, niche up, up there. Um, and then, and finally, I'll say, i- this is with respect to the architectural design, again, that retro industrial. The current plan really erases a- all semblance of what's there now. And, you know, frankly, people come to moral bay, they come to experience, this is what I think, they come to experience. Something that really doesn't exist in very many places anymore. They, they don't really come to see the new. If anything, they come to, to, to partake of. Mythologically, what was the fifties or the sixties? So I think we should give some real thought to taking this admittedly old building and maybe we could call it iconic. And trying to work with what's there and, and as we upgrade and remodel, leave. Some of the details of that building in place so that subsequent generations who come to moral bay will still get to feel. They're coming to a, a bygone world. That's my thought.
Nice, nice points, Joe. Uh, Mike, your hand is up?
Yeah, here we go. Again, uh, the word, the planning commission word I wanted to use is creative. We can be more creative with the site. Um, you know, we, we do have, we said this, we have our guiding principles which. Come out of the waterfront master plan for the most part. We do have a special tool, as Scott mentioned, which would be the, and Cindy, the plan development overlay. So we can use these tools, but we just need to have a better product in front of us. So as Bill was saying. We can get there and Joe, but we need to do more in order to get there, be more creative. And, uh, what's the last thing I was going to say about this? Oh. A- and somebody said this, I won't say who, but it, it's, it, a red flag went up again in my head about. Whenever you have a property that's currently doesn't meet standards. It's non-conforming or has exceptions. You never add exceptions. When you do something with that property, you never add, you usually don't add, ever add more exceptions. You don't add more, you'd bring it into conformity. We're going backwards on this one, right? I- is that about right, you guys? I mean, we don't want to add conformity. Yes, I think Joe said it, whenever you redevelop something, you try to meet the current standards, like ADA. You know, there's a lot of things we've got to try to get right and, you know, so we got to think about it more. That's all I'm going to say. So we shouldn't be granting more exceptions. We should be trying to get them up to the current requirements, right? That, it just went up.
Ms. Winholz pointed that out too.
Oh, that's a great point. That was a great point. Yeah.
All right. Do we have any other comments on this? I think we've given a lot of feedback to staff and the applicants. Scott, do you?
Uh, I would ask that, uh, I mean, there was a lot of really good feedback from all of you. Um, certainly appreciate that. Um. I, I would like to, uh, provide the opportunity. Normally, we don't want to be meeting in person. This is a little more of a back and forth process. We have the applicants, harder to do it on Zoom. Um, so I would, um, ask that you ask the, um, the applicant, you ask, uh, Mr. Newton if you'd like. It, you know, to ask any clarifying questions of the commission, um, before we move on. Um.
So Nate, do we still have Mr. Newton on the line?
Yes, we do. I'll give him permission to talk now.
Thank you.
You are now able to talk.
This is Eric. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I think, um, uh, this is all good feedback here, uh, and it gives us kind of a direction to go through. Uh, there was some comments that were. Um, I think, I think the biggest thing is just like, we were, we were trying to utilize the current building and the current non-conforming stuff. Uh, or the items that were there to capitalize off that and make some. Uh, uh, hold true with what the square footage is by, by adding the renderings that we did right there. Uh, from the R M kind of, that was what we were going for. And it sounds like that. The sixteen R M renderings is not what everybody wants here. So I think we got a different direction to head down right now. And, uh, that clarifies us a little bit more, but. Some of the things that we were proposing for public benefit, you know, if we're bringing the entire building back to. Uh, uh, I guess a conforming standard right here, i- it kind of whittles away. Uh, our ability to, you know, hey, we want to make this plaza area a focal point and, and contribute towards that. And, and I hear you guys, uh, the, this parking's a concern right here, but, and I also, everybody's, you know, turning to pedestrians right here. And, uh, uh, taking care of that area. I don't know if you, I, I know you guys all went down there. Uh, the pedestrian situation, uh, through that parking area, i- i- it's a complete mess. And, uh, uh, our idea was to work with city staff hand in hand and kind of. Uh, I understand our public benefit. We didn't really put a number to it because we didn't really understand, uh, yet what. The intentions for that area was and how do we work with the ci- the city staff on making that the. Awesome focal point destination right there. And that is still our attention. But now I gotta get with city staff and, and talk to them about, okay, now we're renovating more than. The amount of demo and leash and work to retain some of that building. And I may have to go completely in a different direction here and. Uh, demo more than what the city will allow me to do. And that'll trigger even, like, all the conditions. And it gets to the point where I've got to figure out, and, and, and some of you guys touch, touched on it too regarding cost versus benefit. You know, I, the amount of money that we're going to put into this thing to make this, you know, an icon building. Uh, uh, and the benefit, you know, that we can give you for it is all related together here. Uh, and if, I, I really wish I had the opportunity like Mr., uh, I think it's Seth. Or, or Sean did with you guys and meet each of you individually, because that could have helped us. In our ability to understand what you guys wanted right here. Uh, and, uh, now that we have a couple of feedback, now, it looks like we're going to have to go to the drawing board again. And get with city staff and kind of change our direction right there on, on, on how we, how we, uh, uh. Kind of design some of your requirements. Uh, I, I think a big thing is you guys wanted a forty-five off the back. Uh, uh, southwest corner, and that kind of changes everything. And we got to figure out how to do that and make it look right and how the harbor walk goes around there. I, I, I think, I think, I, I guess my question is, is do I have the ability like Mr. Green did is to. Sit down with some of, some of you and kind of go, uh, through some concepts. So we can save some time here because I feel that there's so much going on right here and there's so many opinions on this that. I, I almost need. Some immediate feedback and work with city staff and work with some of you on the com- commission to go ahead and, and. Get a, a right direction to go. I don't know if that's feasible. I'm going to put it back to you.
Susan, I'd love to volunteer.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's absolutely appropriate. Um, you can meet with as many as two of us at a time. Um, what is important is that, that it doesn't become a serial meeting where, um, you would say, well, I met with. Um, Bill and he said, when you're meeting with Joe, for example. Um, and I think Mr. Green was careful about doing that because I was not aware that he was meeting with anybody else. So. He, he, he is, has been on boards before and is currently on the harbor advisory board, so he's aware of those restrictions. But, um, I, I will speak for myself and Bill spoke for himself. I think. Most of us would be happy to meet with you and talk about the project. Um. I always appreciate those opportunities because then I understand more of what the vision is of the applicant. Um, so, and Scott, do you see any problems with that?
No, no, I think it's a good idea. Um, you know, uh, Mr. Newton's interested in, in doing now, but the. It's, it's up to the comfort level of the individual commissioner. You're, you're not compelled to do that. If, if you're uncomfortable meeting with applicants, don't do it. Um, if you are comfortable sitting down with them or talking with them on the phone, that type of thing, feel free. Um, if you feel more comfortable, if staff were there with you, happy to do that too. Um, you know, we're here to, you know, to, to facilitate things as much as we can. So, um. You know, whatever level of comfort that you have, we're, we're, we're happy to, to, to help you out there as well.
You, you know, Mr. Newton, one thing I think as well, um. That could be really helpful in addition to meeting with you and talking about it is having a tour of the site. For example, for all the years, even before it was the libertine, um, it was Southern Port traders and I shopped there. I did not know there was a basement. Um, I think I have been on the second floor for, for meetings perhaps, but. Um, or, or events of some sort, but it's been a long time. And it would be interesting to see the space and, and that could perhaps generate some ideas and understanding of. Um, the parameters and, and restrictions and, and possibilities too. So I'm, I'm a big believer in site visits. Um.
I, I completely agree with you. That would be the most beneficial situation because you could see kind of dynamic what we're dealing with there and. And some of, uh, we believe that some of the, our design that we put in there is the appropriate thing to do just because of how. The, 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 the pier is there and meets up with our building and, and, and there was a reason why. We did the fifteen foot two is to, uh, so there wasn't an awkward, uh, jog, uh, between our property. And then, uh, the northly side too. So there's, there's a lot of things that Cindy and Scott and Eric went through just to make things. A little, the, the, the whole concept better too, that, uh, in a, in a meeting like this, we're not able to share with you guys.
Right, right.
And Susan, Susan, I just wanted to say something real quick for the benefit of Mr. Newton as well. Um, you know, when, when, when I was walking out there, in fact, with Scott and Cindy, when I did my waterfront walkthrough. We actually stopped there and, you know, talked about this project. And I was very impressed with the amount of money that the applicant was willing to put into this site. And I asked Scott and Cindy, so what would their return be? And they said, it's the lease, right? They, they're going to get a, a long-term lease for this. So yes, we, we do consider your financial, you know, uh, considerations. In other words, what you're willing to put there. So that, that was never, I don't think on our minds. It's just a matter of getting to the point where. You know, there, there really is a, a good balancing act with everything else we have going there on the waterfront and. And I think Bill, you know, we, it, just as, this is my opinion, I like Bill when he volunteered. Because he does have the kind of background that, you know, uh, of an architecture that, as an architect. That could provide you a lot of good benefit. Now, as far as I'm concerned, I could walk it with you and give you my ideas as well. But I think that it's just going to get down to really designing something that professionals are good at. I'm not a professional architect. Bill is. I think Sean could be, you know, maybe a wannabe good architect. Uh, maybe he is one. I don't know. I didn't ask him those kind of questions. So, um, I just, I'd be willing to do it, but I'm, I can't get down to the level where somebody like Bill could. So I. I'd really lean on Bill. In the past, when I was on a planning commission, I would lean on the people who had the background and experience. To really do something. I don't want to have us as five planning commissioners hear the same thing, get to the same place. Doing the same thing, you know what I mean? I don't believe in that. So I depend on Bill to give me his, his good, you know, feedback. Without making any, you know, commitments, you know, to Bill or the applicant. See, that's the balancing act we have to play. So once we start meeting with all of the planning commissions, we're going to have to do that. That little dance there. So I don't feel comfortable doing that. So I would depend on Bill's great background in that respect and then use his information, your information that you come back with. And then do my research like I usually do and get to the point where I need to do, to get to, to make a boat. So like, that's what Scott was saying, I think. He was saying, if you guys can do it on your own, that's not necessary, especially if you're not used to that. You do not have to do that, but if you want to do it, that's fine. And like I said, if it got to the point where I wanted to meet with you, I'd be okay with that as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike. So what I would suggest, um, is if you, um. Send an email out to the planning commission, um, seeing who would like to meet with you. Um, if this is something you want to do, then we can each respond to you individually and set up a time for that. Um, I think it could be really valuable for all of us.
We really, we really appreciate it. I mean, this is something, obviously, you know, we're dedicated this, you know, my architect Trevor and I have spent a lot of time. Kind of configuring this and attempting to make it the best that we can. Uh, uh. And, you know, we're, we're dedicated to this project. You know, I want to see libertine there for the next thirty, forty, fifty years, wherever it is, obviously. And, and, and we are, uh, we do have a following there. Obviously, the pandemic has hurt us the last two years. I'm not going to lie. Um, uh, but, uh, I, I, I foresee this, you know, especially if we do it right, like you guys said, this being in, eh. The focal point of, and, and the Embarcadero.
Great. Thank you so much for bringing this forward.
And, um, uh, this is Trevor, the architect.
Hi, Trevor.
I'm here with Eric. I haven't introduced myself yet, but I've been, uh, taking copious notes. So appreciate all your guys' feedback. Um, I just wanted to ask one clarification on the, on the view corridor. Um, there's been, you know, quite a few comments about forty-five degree angles on both sides. And I think, um, you know, with the approved Harbor Walk Plaza. Um, you know, we've, we've coordinated quite a bit with the city to, um, integrate, you know, uh. Um, an access between those two buildings. Um, and, you know. When I'm kind of thinking about a forty-five degree angle off of the front on that north side, which, uh, you know. Please correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but my understanding is from what Scott was explaining is that, you know, standing in the street. The two front, uh, corners of the building are expected to be forty-five degree angles, uh, back toward the west, toward the water. Um, if we were to do that, I don't, I, I'm not really following what the, um, what view we would gain on the north side. Because the Harbor Walk Plaza is, is, um. Kind of right up against our lease line.
I don't think you could do it on that side, but there's Scott to answer that.
Yeah, no, the, the, the intent behind the, uh, waterfront master plan, and there's a, there's a figure that we can send to you to show you what it's talking about. But it's really taking it from the street end as you face the building. And so it clips off, um. What is the southeast corner and the southwest corner at forty-five degrees? That makes sense? Yep. And so the idea there is you have this street end where we have a wider area and access point to the water. And it opens up the views in that area. That's, that's the intent behind being, instead of doing the width of the lease site. Saying it's going to be eight feet or thirteen feet or whatever it's going to be. It's really to open up the, the, the view corridors at those street ends because those are wider areas that have greater access. And those are where people will congregate and typically go out and look at the waterfront. So that's the, that's.
The diagram makes it really clear, Scott.
Yeah.
And, and hey, Scott, one last question, you know, uh, I, I know we, in order to retain, retain some of the non-conforming stuff that we have. I, some of the comments coming back, we're going to have to do some modification of the building specifically. Uh, uh, maybe to the southwest corner and then the seventy percent rule to the. Uh, knowing that, triggering that. We're going to be actually encroaching on demoing more of the building now. Where does that put us with regards to holding some of the. Uh, I don't know, the stipulations that we talked about in the past, past, uh, on some of the non-conforming stuff. Especially on the north wall.
Pro- probably not something I can answer here. It's going to be predicated on what the design looks like. Um, you know, so we have to have like some additional conversations kind of based on the specifics of, of things. A little hard to have that conversation here without having a, a plan in front of me.
Understood, understood.
Could I ask one question, Scott? Um, you know, we've done this concept review and. In, in my worst nightmare vision, they have to go before Coastal Commission who has a completely different. Idea. Is there any sort of concept review time with Coastal where they could know?
Yeah, Coastal doesn't do that. But we do, we, so we, but we do interact with Coastal on the waterfront.
They seem to know what they want.
Yeah, yeah. So what happens is we get it to the point where we're, you know, reviewing this and we usually reach out, you know, once we have a, a discretionary application. The conditional use permit application. And through that process, especially if we have questions or concerns about something on the project. Uh, we will reach out to Coastal and talk to them about them.
Okay.
And, uh, sort of have this ongoing dialogue with them, you know, especially if we, if we have questions or concerns about some aspect of the project. We want to get their take on it sort of early on. We don't, we never want to walk an applicant into a wall. Sort of early on, we don't, we never want to walk an applicant into a wall, you know, I saw where they might call that. So we have a pretty good working relationship with Coastal, Coastal staff along those lines. And we're very careful, you know, with the projects that are on the waterfront to sort of get their input. They, they actually, they actually get our agendas, right? So they see everything that comes before the planning commission, whether it's something that really applies to them or not. Because they're, you know, they only really get to say on the waterfront or in the appeals jurisdiction, but they'll even call us on projects that are nonappealable. Yeah, so they pay attention to what's going on in the city and your agendas, time permitting. So again, we have this sort of ongoing conversation with them about stuff that's happening in Moray Bay, so, yeah.
Great, all right, I think. I will close public comment and I think I will close this discussion. Unless we got anybody else, are we ready to move on? Everybody's ready, okay. We're gonna move on to unfinished business, one of the things that came up from Councilmember Heller. Was the community benefit options, there was a subcommittee formed. I believe it was Mike and Joe and Sean Green. And I know briefly Sean did mention that he has a list, I think he was maybe the note taker keeping a list of things. And they're, the, the subcommittee for Vistra is Mayor Heading and Councilmember Addis. They are overseeing the preliminary negotiations and so they are really ready to look at that list. If you feel like it's almost ready or if you need to have another meeting, just wondered if we could have a little update on where that's at. Joe?
I haven't looked at it in a while, I have, I do have a paper file. I mean, I could look at it and. See if we, if we're at the point where we can come up with some sort of summary. Talk to Sean because he was sort of synthesizing. Ideas, but I, we could come up with something in a few days that we could send along.
I think that would be great, if, you know.
I actually, I believe probably Councilmember Heller reached out to Sean as well. They, as well as the commission on that, and Sean agreed, reached out to me.
Okay.
About it, and he said, you know, he thinks he can have a list, you know, ready for us to review. At the meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay.
And so he was gonna, I think he was gonna get back together, you know, with the subcommittee members, kind of run that list by them and then. We'd be ready for a presentation at the meeting on the fifteenth, this is kind of what we have a T bid for. If, you know, they need to do more work on it, then it could just be for the first meeting in March, there's not like, we're gonna miss a window or anything to provide input. But yeah, we are at a point right now, we're starting to have those conversations on what public benefit should be and, and the timing is ideal. Commissioner, or Councilmember Heller was correct, this is, this is the time to fire back up the committee and move it forward, so, yeah.
Great, so if you guys can get together and have that ready before the Thursday before the next meeting, so it can hit the agenda, right?
Yeah. Susan is the other.
All right, you guys, let's have Scott.
All right, so all I was gonna say is, what we had talked about is getting the list in my hands by next month. And Sean didn't seem to think that was an issue, certainly if there's more dialogue that happens between the committee members. Commissioner Nadia and Commissioner Rodriguez, and it takes a little bit longer. But certainly that's what Sean thought could take place, given where you guys left off.
Great, all right, Mike, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, yeah, and just, I just want to confirm what Joe and Scott said, the fact that we were getting close, we just needed to bless the document. So I will be in town next week, Joe, so I'll reach out to you. And maybe we can hook up and put our final touches on it. And possibly have Sean there, but I just thought I'd say that, we were close. We didn't have to do much more other than just finalize it, but the timing's right, but I wanted to ask Scott a question, Susan. You know, because I know with Vistra, here we go again, but Vistra, there's gonna be some public benefit, you know, options or. Things that come to us or ideas, but we just dealt with that with this project. So Scott, what, what do you see as a way, an efficient way for us to. Try to maximize our efficiencies and abilities to get public benefits when multiple projects are in front of us? That are, that are, that are offering public benefits, we just got some public benefit offerings tonight, what I'm saying is. How can we, we're gonna get some from Vistra, see what I'm saying, Susan, they're, they're right, they're not too far from each other. We could redo the whole, yeah, I just thought I'd throw that out there, but I did, because we're, we're all about public benefits.
Yeah, I think proportional to a project is something, you know, the public benefits you might expect from a Vistra type project will be. Likely different than what you would expect from smaller redevelopment project.
I would, yeah, meaning some clarification on that, I think in, in the email, you know, string back and forth between Sean Green and myself. You know, he had indicated that you, the subcommittee, and hopefully you remember this, had come up with sort of. Vistra related public benefits and then general public benefits that we would like to prioritize, right? So those are probably two different things, and I think we're just gonna bring the Vistra ones forward at the next meeting and then maybe at a future meeting, we bring the sort of. Ones we'd like to prioritize for projects, say on the waterfront versus ones in the downtown or something like that, I think that was kind of what you guys were looking at and. And that was sort of the indication that I received from Sean, so I think it'll probably be a two part review that we do related to the public benefit discussion. The next one will be focused just on Vistra so we can get that from the commission in front of the council. And then we'll have the larger sort of conversation about, you know, maybe public benefits associated with certain areas of town and things along those lines, because I think that's what the committee is looking at.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, and Scott, stay there if you can. There was a question in public comment, we've talked about it before and it seems to go back and forth about. Public comment and letters that are coming in and whether or not they will be available, and I know at one point there was a forty eight hour thing which would have put it. Needing to be in on Friday, what, what has happened with that, it changed with council or?
We, so, no, we do have a change and we are moving that forward, so moving forward meetings in the future, we will be having, posting that correspondence. In fact, I can probably, I mean, if it's helpful, after the fact, but I can actually post the correspondence that we received from Mr. Wintholz and Mr. Green. If, you know, that way it's on a website, so they can point people to it when they're looking for it, so we could post it after the fact, so people could see that.
I think that would be great, actually.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, yeah, I thought, I was thinking about it when it was said and. That might be, you know, something that would be helpful so that, I guess, you know, Sean and or Ms. Wintholz doesn't have to, you know, field lots of questions about what they said, so we could actually have it there.
Right. Thank you, okay, planning commissioner comments and future agenda items. Apparently, we're gonna talk public benefits. Anybody have anything else? I sort of had an idea, just from having had the conversation with Sean, it turns out everybody else had to. That having connections between. Board members can be helpful, so whether, you know, how council sort of has set up a person to be a liaison with. A specific board or commission. You know, we've got. The Harvard Advisory Board, Public Works Advisory Board, Recreation and T bid. I don't know whether that's, I'll just throw it out there, something for people to think about, whether that might be a way that. As an individual, one could collect some more information about what's going on in the rest of the city that really does. Relate to planning, you know, it all gets back to that community development and having a deeper understanding of. What those conversations might look like, Bill, you had a reaction to that?
Love it, Susan, I think in the past, actually, the advisory boards have met. As two met together, and for me, meeting around the Harbor Walk and to get the input of the Harvard Department around those issues. That would kind of force our hand to get even more articulate and clear. That could be a really, I think, a good thing, the coordination, I mean, is, on that walk we did with Cindy and Scott. I really began to understand, I mean, the Harvard Department's a major player in terms of implementation and what happens. And for them to kind of know about our, what we've learned through these projects, I think it could be a really valuable joint. You know, advisory board meeting.
I agree, it would be great to set that up, in the past, we've had joint council and planning commission meetings. These other boards are equally as important and the success of this community, so.
You know, Susan, maybe, you know, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to sort of copy what Jeff Heller is doing with the city council, you know, maybe. You know, we each pick a council and especially right now where there's Zoom meetings.
Yeah, it's not too hard to log in, yeah. Well, it's thought, we can think about it, put it on an agenda if we choose to, all right, anything else?
Well, I, Susan, I'd say let's go ahead and put that on an agenda so we can come back on the fifteenth and move one idea or the other.
Okay.
And one, one final comment, Susan, for Mike, I throw back this back at Scott about the APA because a lot of what we talk about, the. The APA publishes what all the, you know, all these cities all over the nation are doing to try to get public benefits, to try to create. More affordable housing to try to, you know, everybody, we're, you know, we have a lot of. Resources, but I think APA would be a good one, so I just don't know where we're at with that, Scott, so I just thought I'd ask if we're still part of that. Trying to get enrolled in APA because they do provide a lot of resources as far as.
Did you not receive the emails back on the enrollment?
Nope, I didn't.
I will follow up tomorrow, I didn't know that.
Yeah, did anybody else?
Did you get it, Phil?
Yes.
Okay. I think I did.
I will, I'll follow up with Gina tomorrow and see what this is, because you should have all.
What I thought, you know what I thought, Scott, and I'm gonna be honest with you because I thought Gina was gonna enroll us, I didn't.
No, she did.
Oh, she did, well.
And so you should have gotten confirmation emails on that, and so I'll. I'll have Gina follow up tomorrow, I assume you guys are all going because I didn't hear anything about it.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mike, I'm gonna have to look back.
That was great, sorry.
All right, and we are on to Community Development Director comments.
I don't really have anything else to add. Appreciate the work tonight, that was, was a lot of good input on the, on the. libertine project, that was nice, I liked the, mission did a good job, I appreciated that, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, thanks to Mr. Endersby for hanging in there, whether he's really there or not, or just. But, uh-oh, is he got, there he is, hi Eric. Thanks for hanging in with us, good to see you. All right, then I would guess we are adjourned until our next meeting, February fifteenth, everybody have a good Groundhog Day and. Hopefully stay and get healthy, all right.
Okay, have a good one.
Have a good night.
Bye.